I'll call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, March 22, 2023. And may I have a roll call, please?
Chair Lo.
Here.
Vice Chair Coate.
Here.
Commissioner Andre.
Here.
Commissioner DeBolt.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Commissioner Soffolpanic.
Here.
And Commissioner Selmer.
Here.
It's a full house. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, oral communications. At this time, anybody in the audience that wants to come forward and talk about something that's not on the agenda, you can do that now. But if it's on the agenda, then you can wait till that time when it comes up. Anybody would like to speak at oral communications? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. And we'll take these one at a time for the minutes. First, we'd like to look at the special meeting minutes of December 14. Anybody have any questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Art seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
One abstention. Next, we'll move to the January 11th special meeting. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain.
I'll abstain.
And Gary will abstain, too.
Yeah, it was just the four of us.
Yeah, I was there. Aye, approved.
Okay. Now we'll go to the regular meeting for January 25. Any discussion or comments? Or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Anybody like to second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Abstain.
Commissioner Andre and Commissioner DeBolt. Commissioner Selmer will abstain. Okay, we're going to move on to public hearing. Letter A, which is a conditional use permit, 23-01, health and fitness facility. And at this time, I'll ask for a... Anybody like to do a staff report?
Yes.
Good evening, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. So again, the subject is a CUP, conditional use permit for a health, fitness facility large. The applicant is basically Conde Koma and requesting to move to 4260 Cerritos Avenue in Los Alamitos. So I'm going to handle the details over to Tom, Oliver, our associate planner.
All right. Chair Lo and members of the Planning Commission, the applicant is here with us tonight. If you have any questions for her, Laura Gutierrez, she's out there. And the applicant has submitted an application asking that the city permit Conde Koma Jiu-Jitsu martial arts training business to move into a 4,200-square-foot unit on Cerritos Avenue, where Coast Party Rentals used to be, if you remember that. The business is currently in the town square shopping center, which is on the far end of town near where Commissioner Andre lives. And their hours of operation are 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The applicant says that classes generally have 15 to 20 students in each class. The proposed use is considered a large facility because it's over 2,500 square feet. If it's over 2,500 square feet or over 20 students per class, then it's a large automatically. And the health and fitness facility's large use requires one parking space per 200 square feet of the unit. The parking lot has 36 spaces, and 35 spaces are required for the mixture of the uses that would be in the building once this were in there, if you approve it. And staff has reviewed this business with proposal for consistency with every... the code and with the general plan, and believes that the affirmative findings can be made for the CUP, and therefore, staff recommends approval of this. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any Commissioner questions for staff?
Did we get any... Were there any letters from any of the surrounding businesses or anything?
No, not at all. Yeah, very quiet.
This is fairly... I mean, it's on the... It's on Cerritos, but it's... It's kind of like it's... The parking is really its own.
Yeah, it's kind of an island to itself, yeah. Yeah.
What days were they open again?
It's Mon... Well, they're open most days, right? Yeah, Monday through Saturday. But the 9 to... Whatever it is, the hours I read were for the Monday through Friday usually, and it's Saturdays, usually just in the middle of the day. So, yeah.
Okay, at this time, this is a public hearing. So at this time, I'd like to open up this item to the public. And if you want, you don't have to. If you'd like to come forward and talk about your business, you can. Perfect. That'd be great.
Excuse me, I'm just recovering. My name is Laura Gutierrez, and me and my husband run the business Conde Koma Jiu-Jitsu. He's actually teaching right now, so he can't be here. But Conde Koma's been established in April 2011 here in the city of Los Alamitos, and we specialize in Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, which is basically primarily grappling and ground control techniques, self-defense, fitness, and, you know, overall wellness is what it contributes to. So over the last 12 years, we've been able to grow and flourish here in this city. Our students primarily reside in Los Alamitos, Rossmore, Seal Beach, Cypress, and Long Beach. With Los Alamitos being our top city, makes up about 30% of our student population. We also have students that are employed by the city and work in the city, law enforcement, medical professionals. So coming into class is easy for them to come in to and from work or home. So, you know, we'd like to hopefully move into this new facility so that we can improve our facility and provide a more spacious environment for them, and as well as continue to expand our business here in the city, since it's been... We've been so fortunate to grow here. And, you know, I would just thank you for considering our application for the CUP. Okay? Any questions?
One second. Any questions? Maybe you could just review like the hours of operation that you plan?
Yeah, so our hours of operation currently, they're... They just run... There's a big window in between. It's 9:00 a.m. to about 11:00 a.m., and that's typically for, you know, the medical professionals, law enforcement, people who work graveyard. And then it starts at... The next class starts at 4:15 and ends at 8:00.
Were you able to read the conditions of the CUP?
Yeah.
And do you have any questions about them?
No concerns about the conditions, no.
Okay. Anything you'd like to change?
No.
Okay. This is your opportunity.
I know. I think everything was all within our existing business guidelines, anyway. So, yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Would anybody else like to come forward and talk about this item? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission. Any other comments or questions from the Commission? I'll make one. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was going to make a motion to approve.
Okay. I had one question, kind of question, comment, is that I know at one point, and I think it's in place in the general plan, we put together an area within the light industrial zone for recreational uses like this, you know? And this area for this project seems to be very, very easy to accommodate some of the concerns that we may have in a light industrial zone. But just my general thought is that, I know we put that in there, and I thought it was a good idea at the time, but kind of my general thought is, is that it's a little bit irrelevant because it's not really going to matter. People aren't going to... People aren't going to look at our general plan and say, hey, that's where recreation, where they want recreation to be. Let's look in that area to rent. Really, it's going to be the opportunity that comes up, right? The opportunity that comes up is where people are going to flock towards. So I mean, just a general thought, as in general, is when we're talking about these things and we're making these plans, it sounded great at the time, but I'm not sure if it really, in the reality or in the practicality of it, if it really was that interesting. I mean, or was really that, you know, poignant at the time?
As a part of the zoning code, we got rid of that zone.
Okay.
And just made it all planned light industrial and allowed the businesses like this to be there.
Okay, so that is gone. That is gone.
Yes, that's gone now. But it's still in the general plan, but the...
It's in the general plan, but it's not in the zoning.
Right. Exactly.
The general plan is a planning document, so, you know, it's like, you know, we, like you said, at that time, I think it was in 2015, that was a plan. But again, like you stated, Chair Lo, that you have to have availability and all that stuff, and as we know that today in 2022, 23...
Right. Things are changing.
The zone has changed dramatically in the city, and so we have to be a little bit accommodating, especially to a current business that wants to stay in the city.
Right, right. And in general, I'm wondering if, in situations like this, is there anything maybe... Because obviously, we're concerned about sidewalks and safety and things like that. Is there... I'm just thinking now, is that something that we want to... At some point, when someone wants to put some of those uses in, we kind of look at that, and we say, hey, if you want to look at this, if you want to have this use, we may have to do a couple tweaks to something. I guess we look at H1 individually like that, too. I guess we could say, hey, you know, if you put a little buffer here between the traffic, we need to have something here, you know, for safety. I guess that's looked at in every plan.
We have our entire team in Development Services. You know, Tom's a planner. We have the Code Enforcement Division in Development Services, the Building and Safety. And so we take a look at that. So I give you an example. If you recall, we had a dance studio move into a... It was an industrial area, and so we were concerned about, you know, safety. So we asked for additional lights put in the parking lot, et cetera. So yes, we do take a look at that type of items.
Yeah. And the area that doesn't have sidewalks is mostly behind the hospital on Kyle and Catalina and stuff like that. And that's now the medical overlay zone. And we do actually have someone who is interested in building a medical building there. And when they do that, you know, the how... The building that burned on Kyle?
Right.
They're planning on replacing it, we hope, with a medical building, and they'll put in sidewalks. So eventually, that area, if it were changed, would end up with all sidewalks and things like that.
Commissioner Gross.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. Good luck. So we're going to move on to item 7.
All right.
Move on to item 7A.
All right, thank you, Chair. This discussion for tonight is at a request of, if you recall, a resident of the city came in asking to agendize short-term rental, a possibility of short-term rentals in residential zone. So I just want to make sure that tonight, it's more informational. So we're going to educate the Commission about short-term rentals. And then, you know, we have some, if you recall in your packet, some examples from different cities that are nearby that allow short-term rentals. And so the recommendation there is, if you would like for us to, after discussion tonight, to agendize for next month, to come back with a draft, we are allowed to do so. We are able to do so. But again, tonight is a discussion, and then we request that the Planning Commission provide us further direction at the conclusion of tonight's discussion. So I'm going to kick it over to Tom to go over the... To give a presentation or to do the discussion report. And then afterwards, we're here for any questions.
Okay. Chair Lo and members of the Planning Commission, this is... Short-term rentals are like Airbnb. That's what everyone tends to call them by. And it's less than 30 days. And if you'll remember, in our zoning change, zoning code change, we added that hotels and motels had to be something that is over 30 days in the... In the code, because Airbnb is not something that, at that time, people really wanted to be in the town. I'm not sure why, but that's just what was gathered at that time. But I get about two or three calls a week by people asking me if they can open an Airbnb in their house. And usually, they are just checking different cities. So we have people that don't move here and buy a place because they don't... We don't allow Airbnb. We consider Airbnbs to be like a hotel or motel because it's less than 30 days. And we... I said that backwards, didn't I? I did. Yeah, so if it's less than 30 days, it's a hotel or motel, is what we added to the code. I'm sorry about that. And the hotels and motels are not permitted in the residential zones. So therefore, we don't allow Airbnbs as well, because they're a hotel or motel according to our code. So that's what your decision is going to be made on tonight, is whether or not we are going to allow hotels and motels in the residential zones, or just Airbnbs, or if you don't want them there at all. So keep that in mind, and I see questions are ready. So... And that concludes my report. Yeah.
No questions at the moment?
Okay.
The term hotel motel, how many rooms must it be to classify as a hotel or a motel?
No amount of rooms is listed in the code. It's just if the rental is less than 30 days and it's a hotel or motel, is what the code says right now.
So would that rental be subject to the hotel tax?
Yes, and TOT tax is what that's called, and we could charge that, which, you know, is just a transit... Transient occupancy tax. Yeah, so, yeah. It could be subject... It usually is. That's what most cities do. Yeah.
The TOT tax, in case you're wondering, is currently in Los Alamitos, 8%.
Yeah, which is the lowest one in Orange County.
Correct. Yeah, so let's see, Seal Beach is 15%. La Palma's 12%. Garden Grove is 14.5%. Cypress is 10%. So you can see that Los Alamitos is on the low side.
With the amount of calls you're getting, what would you estimate the amount of Airbnbs being here? And how much revenue do you think annually would that bring the city?
Well, it's the same people sometimes calling and asking and hoping we've changed over the last few months. But I would... I would say that there are quite a few people that would like to do it because of... This is within... I mean, if you're not from this state, this is in proximity to Disneyland and the beach, even though it's not got a beach in the town. People do want this kind of opportunity to, when they leave their house on vacation, to rent it out and things like that. Some people make a living off of it. Some people just rent out their place while they're on vacation. So... And I think the person who brought this up last month, she just wants to do it while they're on vacations and things like that.
Commissioner, it's hard to determine a number on terms of revenue, because, you know, with a hotel, it's sort of... Because, you know, you have a set number of rooms.
Oh.
And how many nights. And then, you know, a lot of times, a hotel will tell you the average of occupancy for that hotel. Here, we don't know how many possibility of, you know, a rental, a short-term rental, and then we don't know how much they're going to charge. You could have one place that's going to charge $100 a night. You're going to have another one that's going to charge $1,000 a night. So it's very hard to determine at this time, I think, expected revenue coming in in regards to the TOT.
How come our TOT is so low?
Uh...
Because everything else is so high.
I...
It's not going to cost you money.
Fortunately, yeah.
So that's the tax that you want high, because it's not costing the residents, in my opinion.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I don't know the history of why that is low. It's just, again, anytime you do a tax increase, you have to go to the voters, and we've never been directed from my term, you know, my short-term here, time here, to, by council, to go and increase the TOT tax, so.
Just add one bit to that. I'm looking at the TOT ordinance in our immunity code right now, and it looks like it was enacted in 1964, so that...
Oh.
May explain in part why the numbers are...
Wow. In compiling the information for this, in the staff report, did you call any of the cities in order to get their...
No, I... All of this online, they... A lot of cities have really cool websites for this, for the people that run these. They have online signing up to be in Airbnb. They have online declaration of your TOT, how much you've collected. And they're... Yeah, it's pretty set up around the county.
Is there information on the problems that the cities have had with the Airbnbs as far as with the transient occupants?
Some cities have slow... Cut it down to a certain maximum number of Airbnbs there can be in a town. You sign up to be in Airbnb, and they stop it at like 150 units or something like that. And that is because, for instance, in Seal Beach, the entire city was being taken over by Airbnbs, they felt like. And so they wanted to cut down on that. So they have put a cap on it. They also required a CUP for it for a while, and every month was CUPs for three or four Airbnbs. So it was getting ridiculous. But the biggest problem is parties that go beyond the house, is what the biggest complaint about them is.
Correct. So, you know, I know this is in the desert cities, you know, because of the large music festivals, and they have the short-term rentals. That's what Tom said is an issue there. But the city has put, I don't know, guidelines in place to make it really strict about, you know, if you say you're going to come in with six people, then you got to come in with six people, and actually, we'll penalize the owner of the short-term rental if they found out that more than six people came. They have really strict noise ordinances, so like you can't have any type of outdoor music or sound after 10:00 p.m. So they're... You know, that's the biggest one that I heard about issues with short-term rentals, but those cities have enacted, again, guidelines to kind of combat some of those issues.
Newport had a lot of problems, too.
Yeah.
Big Bear's done the same thing with what you're talking about. There's a sign that has to be posted, how many occupants, how many vehicles, has to be lit. If there are more vehicles, you can call a phone number. They have to then... Somebody comes out, or the manager of the property has to come out, remove the vehicles. But they can also be written up and potentially lose their ability to be an Airbnb. So, yeah, they've had to crack down as well, because they took over Big Bear as well, to where they were just...
That's all there was.
Yeah, it was all Airbnb, so it got really bad. But, yeah, the ones that have them have started to put a lot of stricter requirements around it to keep that kind of stuff from happening.
How do we enforce or know when they're being rented, so that we're being... Receiving our money?
We... The way code enforcement would do that is they look on sites like Airbnb and see those, and that's how they track them. And in the newspaper, whatever, you know?
I could be wrong, but I believe if it's rented through something like VRBO or Airbnb, that that tax is collected on that site. I don't know if those sites then pay the county or the city at that point, but...
You definitely charge it on the site.
Yeah, you're charged. So I just don't know how it comes to the city, but I believe that is all done through them. Now, if they're renting off of Airbnb, then it's definitely hard to collect.
Right.
Almost impossible at that point.
Yeah.
But if they're going through a site, I think it's collected.
Yeah, and they... But, yeah, a lot of cities have that program I was telling you about, where they... You just go on there and say, I rented for this many days. They were... I collected this much money, and here's my TOT tax, and they pay it as they go, so.
Good. So at this time, it's a public hearing. I'd like to open up the public hearing for any discussion the public may have. And anybody like to come forward?
Hello again. So I just wanted to just go through a couple of things as I'm listening to the discussion. And let me just say first, as a very longtime resident of this city, it's exciting to me that a resident could come and present an idea and hear all of you taking this seriously. I just think it's just really, really neat. Makes me prouder than ever of our city. So I just wanted to say, as far as like sites like Airbnb, typically, we always think of it renting a whole house. But there's also the ability through Airbnb for someone to rent out spare bedrooms. So someone like me, for example, that raised four children in this city, my kids are all grown and out of the house. I'm not planning to do this, but someone, if it were allowed, someone might decide that they're going to rent out, you know, a couple of spare bedrooms, maybe to college students or to visitors or something like that. So it's not necessarily renting out the whole house. There's all sorts of facets. There's also a part of Airbnb where it's not just a short-term, it could be a 30-plus-day stay, which has grown in popularity since COVID, with digital nomads and that term, meaning people that can work remotely, who will go rent a house for two months. You know, so you might have someone staying for two months, for 30 days, then five days, then, you know, something like that. But you can... There's guidelines where you could set the number of days that people are going to stay. So the city might decide, you know, that single-night stays are not going to work out good for our city, because that's typically when you get the biggest level of problem is on one or two-night stays, where people come into town for a large event. And so that might be another consideration that we would want to look at. I did mention on the last about there are softwares. The one that I'm looking at has modes where you can put a sound level, and you can alter it for day or night. So one level of noise might be acceptable during the day, and then night and early morning, another. It also has a feature where you can keep track of how many people are on your property. So that would be picked up by a noise monitor. But even if everybody was saying we got to keep real quiet because of the noise monitor, this software has a feature where it picks up cell phone signals. And so, you know, anytime there's a gathering, everybody has a cell phone in their pocket. And so even if they were quiet enough to go under the radar, an owner would still be alerted when there was a large gathering. And that would allow the owner to contact the person who's rented and say, look, I know you have extra people, before the neighbors could really even get upset. So like, there's a lot of that that could help us be successful without disrupting our neighbors. I just think it would be, you know, a great thing for our city. Hotels, they're great, you know, if you're a one child or if you're a couple. But if you're a family wanting to come to Southern California to go to Disneyland and the beaches and Universal Studios and all the things that are within driving distance, a hotel is not really the place you want to go. You want to be able to rent somewhere that has a garden where the kids can run around and that sort of thing. So I think Airbnb caters to that, and that's why it's such a popular thing for families. So just a couple more things I wanted to add to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll keep the public hearing open, and any more discussion that we wanted to appear? Any more thoughts?
I have some thoughts.
Okay.
This young lady came forward a couple months ago. You didn't state your name, so I'm...
I'm sorry, Leslie Whitley.
Ms. Whitley came forward a couple months ago and spoke in front of this commission and provided a very compelling argument, or not argument, presentation. And I think I was the one that suggested that the commission staff look at this. And since then, I've done some research on my own, and I don't know if it's called research, I've just tried to become more familiar with the whole concept. And I have to tell you, Ms. Whitley, I have kind of soured on the idea. I'm sorry, but I've actually done like 180. I'm pretty much opposed to it right now. And I think, you know, it'd be useful for me to state some of my reasons. And I must start off... I didn't have this as a reason, but I'll start off because you said about software that's available. That software would need to be purchased by the owner and implemented and maintained, and I don't know what the cost is. So we would not know. I mean, we don't know if that software would be useful or if it would be in place. But what I've done when I started familiarizing myself... familiarizing myself with this is I looked at some other cities, I looked at some newspaper, you know, reportings and so forth. And it seems like, you know, it kind of destroys the neighborhood in the sense that people, if they move in a neighborhood thinking they're living in an R1 zone, now they've, now they've got this basically rogue hotel in their city, people coming and going that they don't know. Some of the other things, you know, the, the owners have little control over the tenants. The neighborhoods basically become tourist zones often. And again, you remove the, the expected zone, the complexion of the neighborhood from the, from the other residents when you open your house up to these tourists. And, and another thing, you can also reduce, you know, we've taken great efforts here with our RENA numbers and so forth to provide housing units. This can actually reduce housing units because if a unit is no longer available for long-term rentals, it becomes a short-term rental. Now you've lost the housing unit. So that's one thing. Another thing that I saw frequently was issues, negative issues with crime and nuisance complaints. Again, you know, these could become year-round rogue hotels. And, and they also take, they take revenue and tenants away from established hotels, like the ones we just brought into the city. So I, I think, I would like to go beyond denying this, denying staff look at this and, and, and request that staff make sure that our codes have enough provisions to prevent this from happening. And also to provide enforcement mechanisms in the event that people do start doing short-term rentals against our ordinance, to provide enforcement mechanisms for them to be cited. So that's what I want to say.
Sorry. Anybody else have any thoughts?
Well, to piggyback off that, I don't think it should be something that we just completely disregard because it's also been told that we can limit the number of units, possibly limit the number of units in particular areas, maybe have one neighborhood, have two units, three units, whatever that might happen. So I still think it should be considered and all options still laid on the table. I actually like the idea of this. I've lived in cities, I've lived in San Diego for 10 years and this was a very popular thing with their tourism industry. I think San Diego, when I was there, rated number one tourist, one of, one, number one, or number two behind New York, tourist city in the entire country. In fact, one of the units that I lived in, I was there long-term, two of the units in there were short-term rentals. And we never had a problem because it was run effectively. I think that this is something that I've even considered. I have multiple properties in this city. And with the Olympics coming up in the area in 2026, this is something I've actually researched. So I'm actually excited to see that it might be here sooner than, than later. So I don't think it should be taken off completely. I think more research does need to be done about impacts on the city, impacts on certain areas, whether it be restricted to certain, certain limitations in certain neighborhoods or not. But I personally think it, we should take the next step in, in moving forward.
I can see both sides of the coin. I think it's kind of a, do you penalize one group of people for the negative problems of another group? And that's what we usually do, that a few people will make a bad for everybody. And so I don't want to do that here. I want to take the time to really go through and take a look at this. Do we know what, how many, for instance, Seal Beach has? What percentage they now use?
Not offhand.
Do we know how often now they have difficulties or any of our neighboring cities? Not so much. I would expect problems from Newport Beach, Palm Springs area. I would expect that in some of the areas that we discussed that have problems because of some of the things that they have that occur there. We're not going to have those same type of events in this town, I hope. Really hope. But I would think that we should kind of take a look at both sides of the equation and give it some really thorough looking into. And at the same point, I think we should find out why we're not taxing as much.
I'd particularly like more research done in comparable cities. Like was addressed before, we're a quote unquote beach city, even though we don't have coastline in our city. So I don't know if the outliers in, in Seal Beach would even relate to what we would be getting here because they are actually coastal cities. So looking at.
Cypress.
Cypress, maybe parts of Long Beach, Fullerton is short-term rental codes. And here you, you did supply. But I think looking into those impacts, both, both negative and, and positive impacts that it brings to the city, I'd like to have a lot more information on that.
And I want to make sure that we're not getting somebody that's going to rent for long-term to use our school district inappropriately as a short-term rental. So I want to make sure we look at that because our school district's very popular and people want in here. I get that. And that would be a reason for them to do just that. So I want to take a look at those things. So we should look at everything. We have the base here. That's another good thing. We have people coming in for the pool, the Olympic team, and some of the things that are being done at our bases. We have an attraction in the city. We just can't allow, we need to look at what are the pros and cons and not allow a small group to dictate to us. So I do respect the commissioner's view on the others, but I think we should take a good look at it before we make a final decision.
Actually, to that point, I'll give one example. When I was renting out my house on Park Bar, I did get a call from a individual who was coming and he was doing some training on the base and only staying 15 days at a time for the next six months. And he was asking me about my unit. And I told him I can't rent it to him shorthand. It'd have to be full, you know, the whole month. So, you know, that was one example of an opportunity that I think we're missing.
Yeah, I kind of echo Victor's concerns. I, we already have to contend with ADUs coming into the, the possibility of coming into the neighborhood, whether or not somebody decides to build an ADU or not. Okay. Or maybe an ADU is built, but then used as a short-term rental. The, from my perspective, when I moved into this city, I think probably when everybody moved in, you know, you're, you're coming in here, you want to be out of an apartment, you're into a, a single family home, that type of a thing. And yes, you have homes that are rented, but they're generally rented, or they are rented now for a minimum of 30 days, you know, on a month-to-month type tenancy. But no landlord is going to rent. If you're looking to, if you're looking to rent your home, you want a long-term tenant. And because you want the stability, you want the, you want the renter, the tenant to become a part of the community. Generally, they're coming here either because of their job, but most likely, the, the big draw is the school district and they're bringing the kids in. And, and that's what we come here for. And not to have, as some of the other cities that evolved, that started with the Airbnbs, let's just, for lack of a better word, let's just say unrestricted. And then we have to put signs up, we've got it, so that everybody knows who's the manager. I don't want to see that on my neighbor's house. I don't want to see it on my house. I don't mind it on an apartment building where it, you know, it says who the management company is. So people know who to call if there's a problem, or the police know. But in my own neighborhood, just from an aesthetic point of view, I don't want to, I don't want my neighborhood turned into, into a, a multifamily neighborhood. Regardless what our governor thinks and our legislator thinks, you know, with the ADAs and, and this, in my opinion, this illusory shortage of, of housing that we supposedly have, I just don't see it. Okay. The, we have people leaving the state in record numbers, but yet we seem to have a housing shortage. I don't think we have the housing shortage. If we have the housing shortages, it's, it's people coming in here illegally to begin with, probably. Okay. The, the, people have to live somewhere. And so if that's the, the, what we're trying to address, I, I, I just don't want to see our neighborhoods, at least in Los Alamos, compromised anymore than we already are. And I don't know that we have that many ADUs going at any given time. I don't know how many we have. I know in Long Beach, there's a lot going on. But it, it's bad enough that the state imposes what they, what they have on us. I really don't think we should do it to ourselves. And I don't know that we can say, in this city, you, in this neighborhood, you get this many, and in this neighborhood, you get this many. And to try to, you know, I guess if we want to keep it all down in Carrier Row, let's keep it all down in Carrier Row and not, not on this end of town. Or let's keep it in the Highlands, but don't keep it up here.
Well, you, you did that.
You know, so I'm just, so, so I guess it's a, my, my thoughts are that it's more of a global, it's a global thought. I'm, I'm just not interested in, in compromising our R1 zones anymore than they already have been. And, and it's, you know, if, and if you go into a 30-day rental, I mean, just forgetting the short term, the short term is less than 30. So now if you have the, the Airbnb's or whatever they are, and they're going to go beyond 30 days, I suspect they fall under a whole different set of regulations. Landlord-tenant laws kind of come into play with the COVID restrictions and everything else. And you just may not get somebody out of your, out of your Airbnb. I think the state law will come in and, you know, and take over that. But that's, that's a whole different issue, not germane to this. But that's, but I'm just not interested in the transient, nature of that type of a, of a setup, at least for me in this city where I live. That's my thought. And I own property. I got a lot of rentals, okay, that I take care of, that I own. And, and I certainly don't want my tenants subletting. I mean, they can't. I mean, we, we have that in leases, but, but, you know, it's, as much as I like rentals, I'm not interested in, in destroying the character of, of our city that we have here. So that's my thought.
The way to break that down is limiting the percentage based on the number of dwelling units. Suburbia Estates has 106 houses, at 3%, three of them could be Airbnb's. Much different for Apartment Row that has 6,000 dwelling units. So now 60 of them can be, or whatever it might be, 180. So that's how you do it. You're not saying I get more, you get less. So that's maybe could address that concern. But I just, I don't think that, I mean, I'm not for it or against it. I just think more information needs to be presented. And that's why I would personally like to see it move forward.
So I have one thought. I just, and tell me this is a bad thought, Steph. Could you do, could we do something, say, as moves forward and it goes down the line, something that you could approve through, say, January 1st, 2025? And it has an expiration, meaning that we're going to allow Airbnb's until a certain date, where it has to be re-approved and re-affirmed. So you only approve it for a certain amount of time. That gives you a chance to see what happens, see what, how it works, see what, you know, things happen. And then, but you, but you have a firm expiration date. You set it up with an expiration date, which may make some people happy, right? Say, hey, we know we're going to get another bite at the apple on this if you do approve it. Is that something that's done or not done? Maybe, maybe the attorney would, I'll just, that's just a thought I had.
Yeah, I have not seen the city ordinance have a built-in sort of evaluation or expiration sunset date. I haven't seen that done at the local level. I think part of that is, you know, ultimately the city council makes the determination and the city, the composition of the city council changes periodically. So you can't necessarily do something that's going to force the hand of future city councils. That said, you know, Planning Commission, if they were to make a recommendation up, we could include in the recommendation that they think it's a policy that warrants reevaluation periodically and so forth. And that's sort of a statement of intent. And the council, again, if this were to move forward, can always take an item up and decide whether or not they want to modify an ordinance or impose changes. But just to answer your very direct question, I have never seen a sunset date included in a city ordinance.
But is it possible?
It, it's possible, though I don't know if it's enforceable, that you would be able to bind future city councils to, to go ahead and be forced to reevaluate an ordinance. And I think that's probably why you don't see it done.
Figure there's a reason. Go ahead, Victor.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, when I was doing, when I was doing my research, looking at, at this issue, a lot of cities that have, have approved it in the past are now taking measures and to try to oppose it or limit it. In some of those cities, there's a lot of groups, citizen groups that are, that are organizing to, to force the opposition and to reduce it or eliminate it because of the effect it's having on the neighborhoods and destroying the neighborhoods in their, in their opinion. And also would like to point out that Airbnb is a well-funded organization that has significant money and they do a lot of lobbying. So this is more than a grassroots thing. This is, this is big business. And, and I share Commissioner Bolt's concerns too, that we have enough going on in this city with, with the attack on our R1 zones, not just this city, but all cities, attack on the R1 zones. We don't need to add this to that, to that arsenal that's going to increase the density in our neighborhoods and take away the traditional neighborhood feel.
Can, can we limit it to other zones other than R1, R2, 3?
We'd have to do a little bit of research on that. I haven't seen through what we've looked at, the jurisdiction or city doing that, but we'd have to look into that a little bit more.
It appears, at least in the two areas that I'm familiar with, my dad lives out in Joshua Tree. That's another area that absolutely exploded with Airbnb-type facilities, the RBO, whatever they use. You know, it, it seemed like the people that were renting under those were pretty happy with it. And the ones that were not, were not real happy with it. In other words, the people that were there living there or, you know, they're long-term, what have you, renting typically weren't super pleased with the explosion of it. I think it's quieted down a little bit in the sense that I, like you said, that cities are putting the brakes on and saying, whoa, you know, they're putting in stricter implementations to how you, you know, have to now get like a permit type of a situation in order to, to do it. So it's, it's becoming more regulated, which is good because I think that's what's maybe quieting down, you know, the other people that don't have them that are having to deal with these people in and out all the time. The regulations, I think, are helping. Kind of the same in Big Bear. There's a lot of uproar with the people that lived there on a regular basis, you know. That's a tourist town by nature. And so people that were, had vacation homes or whatever decided, hey, I can make some money when I'm not there. Vacation rentals have always been something up there. But then when this hit, it seemed to explode it even, even further. So yeah, you now have people that live there that are not very pleased with the amount that went in so fast. And then all of a sudden, you know, the city is, is trying to put the brakes on saying, wait, you know, we have too many, so now we're not going to allow any more, you know, putting a high price on a, on a permit type of a situation or different things to now combat it. So I, I'm, I'm with you guys. I'm seeing both sides of, of the conversation and it's really interesting. But I think where, to me, partially where the failure was, was just in that, that it just, it just went rogue and it just took off. And I don't think it took off as fast as a lot of cities expected it to. Nor did I think they were going to have to deal with the, the problems of, of how many and, and what was going on. So I think if they could go back and look at it again and do research like we're doing, you know, this is a discussion. This is just to be able to put it on the agenda to actually do more with it, right? So it would seem to me like the discussion is the important part. And I think doing the due diligence and coming up with, if, if it is something that is being thought about or we're serious about, that we do put those regulations in ahead of time, we go to those cities and find out. Maybe, maybe it requires, you know, meetings with these people to say, what were your pitfalls? What, you know, what, what is it that, how did it start? And how is it ending for you guys? And what, what fixed it or what hasn't fixed it? I mean, I think those are bigger questions versus just seeing, you know, who's got them and what they're doing. It's like, how did? It's like, how did that program work for you? And what have you done to rectify any issues that it may have presented along the way? See what I'm saying? Two cents.
Okay.
Two and a half cents.
Sure. Mission girls.
I agree with everybody. I'm on the fence of it, but I still think we need further investigation. I do have one big concern. While we have this on our agenda tonight to take a look at, we have one person here interested in it. And we recently had a lot of negative comments that people don't get informed of things, which I truly believe that people don't pay attention, and only when it affects them do they. So I don't want to find us having this on and saying, oh, we're going to do this, and then suddenly we get an onslaught. I don't know how to reach out to the town, and all of Los Alamos said this would come their way, other than to say, whatever we can do first, I think we should be doing that to get that kind of feedback as well. Because if we decide to go ahead with something like this, and suddenly we get a whole room full of people against it after we've done all this again, and we've done there and done that, I don't want that type of thing. I don't know how to reach them. I don't know what it's going to take. But I think we should allow also the input from the city and somehow find out how to get their input.
Yes, so can I have Tom explain the process of what's going on? So, or correct me if I'm wrong, right? So we're having a discussion, right? And so we're going to take direction from the Planning Commission, right, on whatever you decide to direct us tonight. So let's say on one end, right, that we're going to proceed with revision to the ordinance, with regulations, everything, right? Eventually, city council will be making that determination, and it's a public hearing. Because it's a public hearing, then we as staff will go out there and try every means possible to get this word out to the city, right? There's numerous ways we can do it, which we have done in the past. Naturally, put it on our website. Naturally, put it on our social media. We can do mass mailers and, you know, advertisements in the paper. And it's multiple papers, you know. Typically, we do the local community paper, which is News Enterprise, and we can expand that. So we do have a plan in place because of what recently occurred, so we can take care of that. And again, correct me if I'm wrong, but because it's a public hearing, it has to go twice before council, first reading and second.
So if we were to receive direction at some point in the future to return with a proposed zoning code amendment, that would involve a public hearing before the Planning Commission to make a recommendation up to council. And then the city council itself would have a public hearing, and the ordinance would be presented, you know, for the first introduction, and then come back at the next regular meeting before being adopted. So there'd be three opportunities for individuals interested to get involved at that stage if we were to receive direction to actually cobble together a proposed ordinance. At this stage, we haven't dealt with that type of outreach, because it really is a preliminary discussion, trying to determine whether or not it's an avenue that the commission even would like us to explore at greater depth, so.
So forgive me for maybe misunderstanding, but you're saying the mass mailers, the whatever, isn't going to go out until an ordinance is actually created, approved by us, and given to city council?
No.
It would be, it would be noticed before it comes back to you. So if you're considering a zoning code amendment, that involves a public hearing with required notice to try to make sure that folks in the community are aware that that's something under consideration by the commission. Again, this stage is just a very preliminary discussion to decide whether or not it's even a course of action you'd like staff to pursue and bring back to you for further discussion and consideration.
Usually that public notice is just the little thing in the back of the News Enterprise, right?
Yeah.
That, I mean, I don't think anybody reads. I mean, I look at it, since I've been on the Planning Commission, I see lots of name changes, different things. But nobody, nobody looks.
Well, you know, here.
For one of our items that we did, we actually took an advertising piece, colored, half-page to notice that. But we wouldn't just notice that News Enterprise, we would, you know, like I said, mass mailers.
Do you guys ever post it on like things like Nextdoor or other types of? I mean, because it seems like a lot of the community gets on that. And then from there, it just goes like, like, you know.
Word of mouth.
Well, comments just start going. And so like if, just as an example, I don't go on it that much, but I've noticed it tends to.
We typically do not go on a social media platform like the Nextdoor. We rely on the city's social media avenues, which is.
Well, it seems like if you wanted to get it to people, that would certainly, I mean, honestly, that would be a way to do it. I don't know if there's a problem with doing that, but it seems like if you want to reach out to the community, that's a great place to do it.
Yeah.
I would just say that if you want to reach the community and know that you have, then you either do a direct mail or you litter the doorstep, you know, with a flyer that gets their attention and asks the question. You know, are you ready for an Airbnb? Or how do you feel this is going to be a topic of discussion? One other thing, I know we're talking about it here, and I know we are kind of like, we're the preliminary group before anything goes to the council. But I'm just wondering if this is something that the council probably needs a heads up on. Because how far do they want us to go?
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, because, you know, it's kind of like, you know, we're not elected. They are, okay? And if all of a sudden, you know.
If they're anti, I mean, they can't really discuss it. But I mean, if they're not really interested, it's exactly what you're saying. Then we're kind of wasting our time.
Yeah, and it's a process. So in the city of Los Alamos, correct me for state attorney, the process here, because we have appointed, which is the Planning Commission, this is vetted through the Planning Commission first. So if you do say, yes, we want to go ahead, we have to go. Then the next step is go to council, and at that time, they can decide upon that, you know. If we just went to council right now and said, hey, do you think, and they said, no, then lack for a better term, why do we have a planning?
Right, 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 okay.
Could the Planning Commission have a community outreach where, before we spend, you know, three hours discussing it for the next three meetings, where we get it out there? So we can have, I mean, I can talk to my neighbors and get their opinion, but is there a way that we can, before we get to the ordinance part, where it's work for all, you know, all you guys and us to get more people here to know what's going on?
Absolutely.
Like a survey?
Yeah, you are residents of the city, so you can't talk to your neighbors. And you could go do your local restaurant, and if you see your, like, neighbor there, say, hey, come to the Planning Commission on this day, because we're going to talk about it. Absolutely.
But what about a mass mailer, like, survey in the, you know, giving out to the city? Going out with like a, you know, three-part question being mailed back?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that as well, yeah. You know, we've done surveys through mass mailers, absolutely, you know.
I mean, I have a feeling, like Survey Monkey? I mean, like using Survey Monkey and?
No, 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 but mailer.
No, I'm saying that if you do emails, I mean, I get city emails.
Emails or, again, throw it on Nextdoor, a survey on Nextdoor. And ask for that to come back. You'll get, trust me.
I think you'll get a very strong reaction.
You'll get, you'll get what you're looking for by doing that.
Instagram, Facebook, and email, and not mail so much, because that's a cost. But if you did it on the social media type, those platforms, you would get a decent percentage of people to kind of give you an idea of a response. And that might be a way to go, so that it's not a costly way. But at least it gives us an idea without putting out a large amount of money.
Yeah.
One thing, one thing that I have observed over the years is that most people, you know, there's, our meetings are televised, council, you know, all of, all of 10 people watch the meetings, okay? But, and we rarely have anybody, at least in our meetings here, I don't know how the council meetings are going. But as soon as you get into somebody's front yard, they show up. When we're doing anything that's going to affect people right where they live directly, then the place is packed.
Yes.
It's like the, you know, with the arena numbers and stuff like that, the people that we have. All the other stuff we talk about, you know, we, not, but as soon as it's, they can see this is going to affect them, they're here, but they've got to know about it. And that's probably the one complaint, that's the biggest complaint we heard. You know, the people were from Seal Beach, you know. So we gave our required notice, okay, the 500 feet or whatever it was. And we do the notices, whenever we're doing any type of land use issues where we're, where we have to go out, we mail out the 300 or 500 feet radius of the property, and we might get somebody. But there's people who are just beyond that, that we get to complain, well, why didn't you let me know? Well, because you were 550 feet away, not 500. And so that's where we really, I think, this is, these are, this is the issue, something like this that's going to have a city-wide, affect all the neighborhoods. I think it'd be nice to get input at this stage.
Yes.
At this stage.
I would agree.
And rather than get so far deep into it, and then we send, then we're sending out, we're doing what we're required to do, and.
It gives us more guidance and direction. I mean, we're here for the community.
We all live here. Yeah, we're all, we all do.
So it's, we have, you know, personal, that, added personal interest because we live here. But we're also here to help facilitate what the community wants. And so for us to kind of, we're kind of shooting in the dark, taking our best guess on what we might think. But again, beating a dead horse, but it's like, if you said, did the survey, put it on Nextdoor and said, please share with your neighbors, right? That's going to get out there, and you're going to find in, we, you know, with that, you can actually.
You'll read the comments.
Of what you need, and you'll get, you'll get the comments.
You'll see the comments, but they won't come in here.
They, no, but at least we would have an idea, we would at least have an idea. I don't, the only way you get them in here is exactly what you said. You either put a flyer, or you mail something to them and said, we would like your opinions at the next Planning Commission meeting. That's, you know, when, I've even gotten stuff from Cypress, because I was close to the things that were going on at the racetrack, you know, if you want to come see this. That's really the only time I knew that that stuff was going on. I wasn't looking in the back of a newspaper to try and find this stuff. So I think you have to basically kind of hit them directly. And if that means, you know, I don't know what the cost, it seems like it would be costly to send that stuff out. Maybe you get some interns or volunteers to go door to door and drop a flyer off. Maybe that's cheaper. I don't know. There's certainly kids out there looking for volunteer hours, so maybe you do something like that. But I think it would be helpful for us, for sure, to get that. And I don't know the best way, but there's a few different ways anyway.
Right. If we get that worked out.
So my guess is it's going to be just 50/50. You're going to have half the people on one side, half the people on the other side.
Oh, no, no, you'll see.
I mean, I've asked five of my neighbors, all against it. I asked five of my neighbors, and they were all absolutely no.
It sounds like we're 50/50 on this commission, pretty much.
It could be that way, but, and again, that goes back to the people that want to do it, right? That want to do that, versus the people that really don't. And that really just depends on how many in your community that really want to do a short-term rental. My guess is the majority, you know, we're not, we're not Seal Beach. Yes, we are a coastal community, if you will, but we're not Seal Beach, where you can get there really fast. We're not, you know, Anaheim, where you're right next to Disneyland. We're not those areas. Yes, we border all of that stuff. But I don't think it's as highly desirable for that type of estate as.
It almost seems like if so many people are against it, they're not going to do it. So you might as well let the few people that want to do it, do it.
Potentially.
It's not going to be a problem, because there's going to be so many people doing it.
Again, it would be kind of helpful to know. It'd be helpful to get the feedback.
Okay.
Nice. Marion just said, she talked to five neighbors, seeing what their responses. That's nice, because those are the people we represent out there. We all have our own personal opinions, but I'd like to get a little bit more feedback out of the community.
But we are also representative of the community too.
Yes, we are.
So.
Is that possible to do? I didn't think, I'm guessing that's not possible to do from a resource standpoint, but maybe I'm wrong?
No, we can do that, you know, it's just, we just need a little bit of time, you know. So I'll tell you that right now, for us to go out there and do a survey, right, and to outreach and all that, we will not be able to come back in, what month are we in?
March, yeah.
We will be able to come back in April, ready with that type of information.
Nobody wants to rush into this.
So July.
It's like 2025?
Yeah, summer.
Just before 2026.
We'll work on it. We want to have, you know, we want to have, if we do, let's say, push out a survey, we want to. Like, so for me, the way I would do about it is we would cover our bases. So we would do like a mass mailer survey, we would do an online survey, we have an e-newsletter, we would do that. We would post a survey on our website, so we would give every opportunity. We would have a special event, we have a special, like, coming up in April, Spring Carnival. We have a development services group up there. We would have, hey, you know, do this survey, you know, and stuff. So we would try to go out every, that's my recreation background, by the way. So we would go out there and try to get as many feedback and input as possible, but then we just can't do it within one week or two.
No.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question about that, though, with regards to surveys? How, how good is the response that you get back when you actually, because you just mentioned doing a mass mailing of surveys? What, how many are thrown away, and what do you get back?
I'll tell you, it is a very, my experience here is a very small sample size. You're not getting anywhere.
That's what I thought. So maybe what would be better, because that sounds like a lot of work for little return? I think a mailer where you said, the next planning, whatever, April, May, June, whatever it is, this Planning Commission meeting, we're having a public hearing with regards to short-term rentals, Visa V, Airbnb, or VRBO, whatever, so people understand what that means, come to the meeting. Because that seems like we would get more response and hear to give their two cents, then we would maybe get back in a survey.
No, again, we would, again, I would put there a little survey, and that survey has to be really short. It can't be really long, probably five questions the most, four questions the most. But then on there, it will say that there's a deadline, whether, like I said, we've got to look at the calendar. But at the very end, we would sit there and say, this will be presented at the Planning Commission. So please, you know, we'll, again, poetically put down that if you want to know the results of the survey or provide feedback, input, please attend this at this day on this time. So yes, we would, we would kind of put both of that together.
And when you do a survey and you send it out, then we pay postage to send it back or no?
Yeah, if you want more responses.
Well, how many resident email addresses do you have? Like, I get the city emails to my personal.
I don't know off the top of my head, but referring to the e-newsletter, it sends out weekly. I don't know, but it's, it's, I, yeah, I don't know off the top of my, it's a thousand, like, two, three, four thousand.
But it's not everybody.
Not all, yes.
And this would go out to the R1, it's to the R1 neighborhoods.
But you get the News Enterprise.
It would go out to all residential, yes.
We would probably send it out to all.
Residential.
Addresses, residential addresses.
Yeah, residential.
And it would be property owners, is what it would be.
Yes.
Yeah.
See, I would do Instagram, Facebook, and the email, and take that percentage. If you mailed out a thousand, and then take what you got back in a response, for instance. And that would give you an idea of what kind of, I mean, we're going to get at least some, some idea if we just kind of sprinkle it out across the city, and we're getting something back. It's not worth mailing it out.
We must have somebody in the city that does the digital marketing or digital presence, right?
We do.
So I think this is a great assignment for that person.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I would like to avoid any costs, minimizing the cost if possible.
Okay, so public hearing's still open. Any other people want to comment? Sure, come on, fire away.
Just, just a thought, you know, what I'm trying to want to rent out is my primary residence, where I've lived for over 31 years. But I do invest in other cities. And different cities have limitations that we might consider, like, in the initial stage of this. If, you know, if the residents are not opposed to us trying. And maybe we start off saying that there's a total of 30 spots within the city. I'm making all this up, but maybe 30 spots. And it, you know, you apply for it, and there's maybe certain criteria. You need to have enough parking spots, or, you know, or what have you, whatever, whatever seems to be what will impact the city less. But limit it to the number in the city, so we don't have a situation where there's a street with 10 short-term rentals. So having them spread out a certain distance apart, which I think Fullerton, if I remember, was the one that did that.
One of them had that.
Yeah, and so, but also just limit. Yeah. And so, but also just limit the overall number of them at the beginning as a trial for the city. And if it's a bad thing for the city, then we, it gets voted that we lose our spot. You know, it, that, you go into it knowing that. Um, it also, a lot of cities have where every short-term rental operator is limited to the number of rentals they can have in a city. And my, my understanding of Big Bear was it used to be a free-for-all. I could go buy 15 cabins and rent them all out. And now throughout San Bernardino County, I think they've limited it to three now, other than people that already own these who are grandfathered in. But if I wanted to go buy a cabin in Big Bear, I'm limited. So maybe in Los Alamos, you, you were limited to the, you know, to one per operator, which avoids out-of-state or out-of-country investors coming in and buying up lots of houses. So I think by limiting the number in the overall city, it doesn't impact things like our school district and some of the other concerns that were brought up. And if it's a great experience and everyone says, okay, this is not the problems that they're having in Palm Springs, you know, then the number could go up. Otherwise, it, it could just be, there's a waiting list, sorry, all 30 spots are taken, you wanna have a short-term rental. We can put you on a waiting list, and when someone decides they no longer wanna do that, okay, now we go to the next person on the waiting list that meets the criteria. You know, those.
That's how Dana Point does it, and I was surprised, they only have 150, and they're way bigger than we are.
Isn't a lot.
You know?
I mean, I don't think this has to be a trial and error thing either. We can learn from these other cities on what they've adopted. And, you know, learn from their mistakes as well as their improvements. Um, I just think, it, it definitely needs to get a next step. I think a survey on, if the city wants, it's a good idea. Uh, but also, at the same time, doing the research behind it to see, uh, you know, what the cost and, and, uh, and the benefits to the community are. Um, because I think having access to short-term rentals can actually benefit the community in a lot of ways too. Um, traditionally, people, every time I go rent an Airbnb, I'm utilizing restaurants nearby, I'm utilizing things, I'm, I'm contributing to, um, the local community. So, you know, like I said, I'm not for it or against it, um, but I think more information needs to be sought out.
Okay. At this time, I would, well, maybe I'll just want us to come forward, but, um, this time I'm gonna go from Uslay to Arizona State. I wanna see who wants to proceed with an outreach, okay?
Yes.
That's one, yes.
Yes, proceed.
I'd like more information.
Yes.
I'm gonna say no.
I'd like to proceed with outreach.
No.
No.
So.
I, I'm, I see no benefit to the, to the city collectively, other than maybe a little bit of tax. Definitely benefit to the investor who wants to come in here and buy houses and do it, or, or the individuals who want to do it, but I'm, 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 I'm thinking collectively, I, I see.
This isn't an investor Airbnb area. I'm sorry, it's just not.
Oh, I'm just.
It's just not. You're not gonna find investors coming in, buying up houses in here to.
So we're kind of.
It makes no sense.
As I was saying, we're kind of split on this up here, so we're like four to three, so four to three to proceed, so how do we proceed with, uh?
I mean, I, I just wanna be clear, I'm saying proceed.
Proceed, I understand, just more information.
Outreach.
Outreach, I understand, understand, not to put it in place.
That's who we get from that.
Right, we wanna go more outreach, we wanna just, we want more discussion, we want more information.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Noda, how, how do we, or?
So, so depending on what you'd like to do, we would need a motion, and then a second and a vote. So based on what I'm hearing, that motion may well be to direct staff to conduct further research, public outreach, and then come back.
Okay.
Uh, at an unspecified date in the future for further discussion. Um, or whatever the pleasures of the motion maker, but that's just me trying to paraphrase what I've heard so far.
I'd kind of like to echo on that, to make that a motion. Can we make it 120 days? Is that enough, or do you need 180?
Um, see.
180 sounds probably reasonable.
Can't we just leave it to a later date?
Yeah, we just keep leaving in general. I think we can get it done within 180 days.
Would you like to present a motion?
Yeah, make the motion.
Okay.
One second.
Okay, do you, could we get the motion? Everyone repeat?
Yeah.
How would you repeat the motion?
I believe what I said in that case was the motion would be to direct staff to conduct further research about experiences adjoining cities have had with these types of programs. Um, to conduct some public outreach, perhaps surveys to get some input from the community and to advertise the future discussion we would be having on this topic, and then to come back at an unspecified future date uh, before the commission to further this discussion and decide at that point, uh, whether or not we wanna move forward with the zoning code amendment.
Okay.
But electronic surveys, not ones that cost money. Not like mailer, I don't.
Modify the motion to say low-cost survey.
Low-cost survey.
Commissioner, Commissioner Sol Mechanic.
So just, so you've clarified what a, what a yes vote.
That, that's.
What a no vote?
Motion.
What a no, well, we always have a motion.
Right.
If I, what does somebody voting nay, what does that mean? It, it does not go forward in any way, shape, or form? It ends now?
Yeah, ends now.
To vote now would mean that motion did not carry, and then you could open with an alternative motion to.
Would I have to have an alternative motion? Or would I just?
Well, if no action is taken at all, then we're left with nothing happening. So if that motion is seconded and then approved, then we would move forward with.
It's possible we have no motion and we just adjourn the meeting.
Right, and then, in that case, there's no action and.
No action taken. Same thing, it's probably a motion to.
It's just dead on the table at that point.
Good, got it.
Okay, that was a long motion. Did you get all that?
Comprehensive.
It's all.
Commissioner Gross is gonna make that motion?
I make that motion.
Second.
Second, and that's, uh, wanna do a roll call?
Question.
Comments? Yep.
Questions, got a motion, a second, a question. With respect to the outreach, I just, gonna have outreach, I think we need to ideally ensure that it hits the, the doors of the R1 homes, in my opinion. Okay, electronics is fine, but, and also, it, it, when it comes to doing surveys and stuff and studies and all that, what's your population? We, the population, in my opinion, are the owners of the single-family homes in this, condos, in any single family, in the city. And you wanna reach that population. Not all of them are on Instagram, Facebook, and the city website, and read the, read the legal ads. Okay, but they all own a home, they all get a tax bill. Okay, and I, I really do, if you want, if you don't wanna mail it out, then hand it out. But it, but it, and it, it has to be, uh, clear as to what we're trying, what they're being asked about, you know, which is, do you want, do you want short-term rentals in your neighborhood? Something like that. I mean, just Airbnb in your neighborhood, yes or no? And, uh, something like that. I mean, that's.
Yeah, more information, the more detail.
If it's done that way, I, I can get on board with that.
Okay.
As a next step.
Gotcha.
So as a modified motion, most of modify the motion that way, that we, that is.
I mean, I don't know how you ensure that motion, other than what he's already saying he's gonna.
They, they hit the doors. They, they can get, they can get a list of, uh, of, of owners if they're gonna mail it, or get it to, get it, put it on the doorstep if they don't wanna mail it.
I mean, do we wanna have a thing where we, where we?
I would kind of get it for not.
Let me, so within the development services budget, we do have a budget for mailers and outreach. Okay, and so, um, you know, could we afford in our budget to do, you know, one door hanger, one mailer for this specific? Absolutely. If you're asking us to go above and beyond and do four mailers within the next, you know, for three months, then, yeah, that's gonna take it to extreme.
I don't think, it's, I don't think very, this might be the first time we've even asked for that in.
Yeah.
I know, the whole time we've ever been here, yeah.
So again, we embed, when we do our budget process, um, funds to, to take care of this type of stuff. So just, just same thing as noticing in the paper, that's not cheap either.
And I, I think that would be appropriate.
I think this is an important one to do it on.
I do too.
Understood.
I do too.
Got it?
Do we got that? Motion?
So we have a motion, a second, staff, I believe, understands the direction.
As modified?
I, I don't know that we need a formal modification, I think staff understands the direction.
Yeah, okay.
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 So how about we do a roll call with that motion? Go ahead.
Chair Lowe?
Uh, no.
Vice Chair Colty?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrew?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBolt?
Aye.
Commissioner Gross?
Aye.
Commissioner Sol Mechanic?
No.
And Commissioner Zelber?
Okay.
And motion passed.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Are we getting the taxing entries? Can we talk?
That's the city council.
That's Commissioner reports.
Can we have that go to the city council?
That's Commissioner reports.
Okay.
Reports?
Okay.
Okay. Next, we'll go to item eight, staff reports. Any staff reports? Items from the Development Services Department.
Um, so I do have a few here. Um, I just wanted to let the planning commission know that, um, we have sent, um, the housing element up to the state for the final review, and so hopefully we should get a, um, answer on that soon. Uh, we have, uh, the Recreation Community Services Department is doing the Spring Carnival at Little Cottonwood Park on Saturday, April 8th, from 9:30, excuse me, to 12:00 PM. And then, um, I'm gonna pass out at the end, but, um, we're doing a Parklet Series again, it's returning. Uh, it's on Pine Street. So Thursday night is a party on Pine, it's a live concert, uh, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. And then Friday is a Friday night flick, so we do an outdoor movie. And so, um, the Parklet Series is four weeks, starting on April 20th and ending on May 12th. So again, Thursday is a concert, Friday is, uh, movies. Go to the website and you'll see the, the lineup. I'll give you one, like, we're gonna kick it off on April 20th with, uh, The Emperors. I don't know if you've ever heard of them, they're a very good, um, classic rock band. And then that Friday, we're, I'm showing the movie Lightyear. So again, um, this is a Parklet Series on Pine Street, and so we, uh, welcome anyone in the city, including yourself and your family. Come out and join the festivities.
At my new office.
Tom, you got anything?
And, um, go, going back to the outreach and stuff like that, that's a big question that we've, we've been dealing with lately, is how much to do it. And, um, so what we really need is good suggestions. Um, because it's, it's tough for us to, to, uh, just on our own figure it out.
Tom, I'm telling you, I, I don't get on Nextdoor.
Right.
But I've had to for the last few days, because I looked at something.
Yeah.
And I'm getting notifications constantly, there's a lot of back and forth, and if you put something on there, you're gonna get a, a, you're gonna get a much better response than some of the other ways that you've, you've gone to it.
But I wonder, is there a way to do it only in Los Alamos?
Yes.
That we don't get.
Yes.
No, we, it has to be done, well, Nextdoor is for residents.
Right, but can.
So you can only join it if you're a resident.
Right.
So when we look at Nextdoor, we use, like me, because I live in this area, and other people that, that's what, and we look at it. And, and, but we, Nextdoor doesn't have necessarily postings that you can say, uh, throw something out from the city and leave it.
They don't allow the government, the local government.
No, they don't.
Cause Nextdoor.com is, tends to be an argument.
Yeah. So that's where we're talking about where, if a planning commission was on Nextdoor, we would like assistant where you could just, you know, go to our Instagram or our Facebook, copy that post, and then, or, or, you know, put it into Nextdoor, because, uh, like Tom says, is they will not let a government entity, and we don't really want people, employees to be personally going in there, doing that on like a personal account.
Can we do that and turn off comments? Because I don't need it.
Yeah, I, again, I'm not familiar with Nextdoor, so I don't know the all ins and outs of it, but yeah.
I just see a lot of back and forth.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it, it becomes a, an argument a lot, so that's, that's what our difficulty has been with Nextdoor. Is that immediately you get, uh, people on there that say really nasty stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, but potentially, like you said, if, if there was a link that any of us could put on there and say, hey, come to the planning commission meeting if you, you know, this is going on, come to the planning commission meeting if you wanna have a voice, and just leave it at that. And whatever they wanna banter about, they can banter about, but it, the fact of the matter is, it gets out there that there's a meeting that they can come to and voice their opinion.
Right.
That's, I think, the important part.
Again, if a, if a commissioner would be willing to assist, that we, that would be, you know, assisting us, because again, we have difficulty as a government entity to do that.
Interesting.
Right. Great. And also, I would like to remind everyone too, that the, this is a city government, and it was vote, you all are, uh, uh, picked by people who were voted in.
Right.
By the public to make decisions. And so you can feel confident that the, the public voted on your decision that you want to make.
Right.
So, I mean, just to throw a little, uh, Star Spangled Banner.
Understood.
We are representative.
And, and, uh, we all know what the easiest thing would be to do, and none of us want to do that. And that's, this is the size of a small high school, and at a high school, when you want everyone to know about something, you put it over the announcements and, um, put it out there. If we had a tornado system, we would put a speaker system out there and say it to everyone, and that would be the only thing that would please everybody in this city, would be to, to actually have us, and then they would be mad that we were doing it. Um, but, but it's, it's very difficult to pick something that everybody would agree is fine. Uh, people, some people say I don't look in my emails, some people say I don't look at Facebook, and there's no end to things people don't do. And, uh, so what we need is something that kind of works for everyone, and, uh.
Well, I will say that leaflets do work, because we got, I got one at my front door two weeks ago, maybe, about the housing element and the Lamson thing coming.
Yeah.
I had no less than 10 neighbors come up to me, did you vote this through? Because they know I'm on the planning commission. So it works.
It, it, it's, the, one of the reasons why those work is because of the sensationalism of the.
Yeah.
The, if I put on there, you will die tomorrow if you do not vote on this. Your neighborhood is going to go under, and everybody's, you know, dogs and cats will be marrying and all that stuff, you know? It'll, it'll, tomorrow it'll be, uh, all over, you know, everyone will come to it. So that's, it, it's, those are sensational.
So do that.
Yeah, we.
One thing that some cities have is they have, if they have the, the, the digital banner, you know what I mean? Like Cypress has that a little bit, where they have the digital banner, like on Valley View, you, oh, they're gonna have a
I'll help you.
A recreation thing, you know, this Thursday, the, the, that's kind of a cool thing. I'm sure we've already thought about that and discussed it, and it didn't go anywhere for whatever reason. Too much money, okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
So, um, it's, it's a great way to get the word out, when you're driving down Cotella or Los Al, and you see that thing, and you, you can't help but, but look at it, you know, at the stop sign.
But we're moving this billboard one block at a time by me as it rains out the Edison Company.
Yeah.
They haven't done anything, but every week they move.
So, so to steer this back, kind of, to, to that call us, that's, that's how we, you know, and give us ideas, email, whatever, and stuff like that, although I don't pay attention to email. No, I'm just joking, I'm kidding.
But comment on the Facebook? No, you know, the city, I think, has done a really good job and doesn't get credit for the outreach that we do. I see it. Um, I pay attention, and I pay attention more probably in the last 20 years than I used to ever pay attention in my life. So I can't say cities weren't reaching out, but I was a typical resident who, oh, that doesn't, I don't care, and threw it away. Now I see the impact, that I'm older, and it took time before I saw the impact. Um, it is only when it impacts our lives that we begin to, or when it's sensationalism. So I think our city does a really good job, and I think they should take credit for it, because they have worked so hard at doing a good job.
Our staff is the best, I agree. Okay, number 10, Commissioner reports.
Me. I do want to say, I want to have that thing go to the city council to increase that tax. We haven't done it for that many years, we really need to address it. That's number one.
Now, the feds didn't have any problem raising it today?
No, they don't, do they?
Do we need to say, as a minute item, it's going to be discussed at an up time, upcoming thing? No? All right, okay.
Yeah. And then, the gym, the girls over there on Pine Street that were moving over to, by Mr. C's, have they moved yet? Are they moving?
You're referring to the dance studio?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, I think last time I checked, they're still in construction, TI improvements.
Yeah, they've, they've changed contractors a couple of times.
That's fine. And then the next one is, what's up with hospital with their, I need to get this through really ASAP, and then boom, the brakes went on.
The change of leadership, yeah.
The CEO's not there anymore?
No, it's just, uh, the, the specific plan was based on, uh, one. No, it's just, uh, the, the specific plan was based on, uh, one leadership. Uh, and then the new leadership is just not interested in that.
So at this point, there's things about this that are very disturbing. The amount of work our city and the planning commission put into phase one, phase two, and phase three, when Michelle Finney was the, uh, CEO, we were promised phase one and two. And then when that, she was promoted to another facility, the new CEO comes in and knows supposedly nothing about these plans, which is really challenging because you would think that you would be engaged in the place that you are leading. And suddenly, when he comes back to us and he's kind of altered phase two, we were promised, this city was promised that they were gonna do phase one and two for sure. What's the ramifications for them for not following through with their plans, number one? Because we did that project based on two phases. We approved it based on those two phases, not one phase, but two. And they have not followed through. And that impacts our community as well.
Can I answer that? Is that okay? Okay. So their, their, their time to do the phases has expired. So therefore, everyone has another bite at the apple on telling how this, this expansion of the hospital would do. If they wanted to, uh, continue this, they would need to, we would need to go back through the planning commission and not question, you would be able to question even the specific plan at this point because they haven't fulfilled the specific plan. So.
So you're saying no ramifications?
Yeah, it's been over, yeah.
I remember that.
Yeah, well, the, the ramification was during the last time, some people wanted the specific plan and other people didn't want the specific plan. We're back at that point again, where some people do and some people don't. Um, it, while it was a specific plan and it hadn't expired yet, uh, it was, it was going to go forward if the hospital kicked in the money and did it. So, yeah, now it's, now it's back up in here again. You have a chance to question it, so.
Well, it's pretty hard for them to come back to us with any plan and have it go forward at this point.
Right. Yeah. Any other commissioner reports? Seeing none, we are adjourned till the next planning commission meeting, which is?
April 20th.
Oh, uh.
April 26th.
April 26th. We're adjourned till the next planning commission on April 26th. Thank you.